This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board Supervisors Meeting, February 11th, 2025 at 3:00. The meeting is available at GoToMeetings as well for a viewer date. We have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Handmade motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Todd's second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approve the minutes of the February 4th meeting and claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the February 4th meeting and claims?
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, a second. Any further discussion?
We're calling Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Motion passes. County Attorney, general discussion.
What I got on my list today, I guess, has just been discussed in the last week or two, or last month or two about the wind moratorium extension. I prepared a resolution to extend that for that three, so I think she's forwarded all to you. I think I covered what needs to be in there. I try not to be more specific than I need to be, but I try to be as specific as I think I need to be. I've got that. Jim just asked for one of the copy. I said, I got on my phone. I do, but it's not coming up. But anyway, I remember what it says. I think, I think I left, I have that, I think, expiring. You gotta have those dates in there. Right. So I didn't fill in the date of this expiring. It probably should have a date, you know, and you could make it indefinite. I don't know if I like that. I kind of like maybe a sunset provision a little bit better from a legal perspective. But I left it blank. So if you settle on a date, just fill it in, you know. Or if you want, we can, Rachel or our office or somebody can type in the date and send it back, whatever works best. But when we discussed that, I think Pam said September 1st. I think that's
Yeah, that should be in the minutes. I didn't go back, but that's, was it August or September?
September 1st, I believe is what she said. So is there any reason we need to have Amanda approve that too, with the date or anything? I don't think so. I think it's a board decision.
So I was having the understanding that we had, you know, kind of extended this moratorium until September 1st, and perhaps I misunderstood that in January. Okay. So we're just doing our paperwork, so to speak.
Yeah, like I said, just fill in the date and, I don't know, I always put a six to draw in for the As and the Nays. I don't know if it's really necessary or not, you know. Rachel always keeps track of that. So any questions about it? I haven't talked with Amanda recently. I think she's on leave with about where, you know, the wind ordinance, you know, process is. I met with her and somebody else a time or two, but it's been a little while and I don't know.
Before the end of the year.
Right.
Right.
So I don't, I guess I don't necessarily know how they're coming.
Where they're at.
So I guess that's what I have for you. Anybody have anything else?
Any other questions?
My only concern with the moratorium was that they've been here two years now trying to get them through, and if we keep pushing it back with this new administration, there may not be any more windmills. So we may lose out on some.
Again, you know, Mark, I'm not going to disagree with you. I don't know, you know, I don't have to criss ball either. You're right, and that this administration has spoken out a lot against windmills. How much they really will put behind that, I have no idea. But as I said, it's just, you know, policy decision for you guys. I mean, you know, I mean, I'm not telling you whether you should do it or not. That's what you guys get paid to do, but I guess something, yeah. Too late now, though, since I already got the moratorium in place. So.
Well, this would put the moratorium actually extending in place, but I don't think we're locked into September 1st. I mean, if we get.
Amanda gets back and gets the windmill ordinance done.
Yeah. We can, we can nullify.
You could lift that moratorium.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, requires a, you know, affirmative vote, you know, but it can be lifted.
Maybe too late by then.
Well, you know, I don't know, Mark. I'm not disagreeing with you, you know, but I'm just, you know, I'm just the legal advisor, you know.
I just give him my two cents.
I, yeah. No, and I, I understand.
Because I wasn't informed at the beginning.
And I understand that point of view.
I'm not saying I disagree with you, you know.
Okay. So my question is, as Amanda's pro tem, so to speak, there's been no mention as to the other individual that was working on this and where they're at. We don't know the status of that. Is that, that's kind of what I've understood from the beginning of the year, and perhaps we need to.
He works, he works for NiOCOG, and I'm part, I'm on two different boards of NiOCOG. So I talk with him, and I have talked with him, and he indicated that it's, it's pretty much in its final stages, but he wants to actually run it across the planning and zoning administrator, which is Amanda, and then get the process going when she gets back. So I don't know if there's exact details that still need to be done, but it sounds like it's.
Well, the name.
Almost there.
Amanda. What's that gentleman's name? Okay.
NiOCOG guy.
Yeah.
NiOCOG.
Yeah, that's the only thing I can think of.
And the windmill, whoever's in charge of the windmills right now, they get together, and then they have a meeting to go over and look at everything. So they're still in the loop, as far as I know. But I talked to, I think it was Tim, when the next era.
John Roberts. Met who it is.
John Roberts.
Thank you.
John, but I wasn't confident enough to say John.
John.
I do know, it took me more time, and I, I guess I don't know what's going into deliberation, so I don't know if this is the case or not, but I don't know when it was. I guess it was later last year. I don't remember exactly when, but, you know, Worth County had their ordinance. Judge pretty much eviscerated it, and, you know, I analyzed that opinion pretty well, went through a lot of the cases. Basically, kind of what the judge said, there was a couple of different things there. Number one is, they kind of said the ordinance was too broad, almost, that it's like the exception swallowed the whole, right? It'd be similar to like, well, you can, you can build a new house, but you can't put it anywhere within 100 yards of where grass grows. It's like, well, you just excluded everything. And so that was one issue she kind of, that, as I recall, the court had that ordinance. Another issue was, was unrelated to this, but was still very, I thought was very interesting, is in her analysis, the supervisors kind of pulled the carpet out from under them after they'd already put a bunch of money into the project, and then they put the ordinance into place, and the judge basically said, oh, that's, that's, wow, I don't remember what word she used, bad, not supposed to do that. So I maybe, so I remember then, I know some counties were kind of going back to the drawing board to reevaluate things. So, you know, maybe that caused a little hiccup. I don't know. But it'd be interesting to see, yeah.
Thank you. We have discussion and possible action on the resolution for moratorium extension first. Chair. So we do have a resolution. Do we want to have a new copy set with the date, or can we just write it in? Just write it in, or?
I'm good with writing.
Okay.
Can we just write it in?
You can.
Okay. So Resolution number 1262-25, temporary moratorium on commercial wind energy systems, whereas questions exist regarding whether a commercial wind energy system herein after C W E S, which shall apply to the singular noun, commercial wind energy system, and the plural noun, commercial wind energy systems. Turbines can interfere with microwave communication signals, which could affect, among other processes, county communication systems, and whereas the county has an interest in preventing and abating any resulting nuisance from decommissioned, decommissioned commercial wind turbines through more robust decommissioning requirements, and whereas the county has an interest in protecting the county's infrastructure, natural resources, and property rights through, among other measures, adequate setback provisions, and whereas the board of supervisors will require substantial time to gather information and coordinate with multiple agencies for the purpose of reviewing, updating, or creating ordinances, policies, and procedures related, relative, sorry, to C W E S development. Now therefore, be it resolved by the board of supervisors of Mitchell County. Mitchell County, Iowa now extends the moratorium, see Resolution number 1166-23 on C W E S, for the purpose of drafting and adopting any necessary improper ordinances, revisions, et cetera, regarding C W E S. This extension shall sunset and be null and void on the day, first day of September 2025. Under this extension, the C W E S company shall still be allowed to apply for M E T tower permits through the county zoning administrator. Be issued M E T tower permits through the planning and zoning department and construct said M E T towers once a permit has been received by the company for the purpose of tracking wind in Mitchell County, Iowa. Motion was made by supervisor. This will be adopted today, February 11th, 2025. Do we have a motion for Resolution number 1262-25?
So move.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Todd's second. Any further discussion?
We're calling Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
No.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will now move on to Sheriff's Board. Thank you, Sheriff.
It's quite all right.
Sorry about that.
So good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I don't have anything before this one, but I will have any questions the board might have in my office or anybody here. Is everything running over there? Yeah, when I left.
That's always a good sign.
Yep.
Did the computer, Ryan said he was there yesterday. Did that get taken care of?
I talked to him. I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. About 15 minutes until that. Oh, I bet the hospital will take more than 15 minutes. Uh, maybe?
Amanda.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Do you want to do Department Head discussion?
Did I skip over that? I'm sorry. Department Head discussion.
I, I used to have a question, and it was to do with the claims, and so, and I know, Jim, you're on a committee of the Port Authority. Does that cost $2,000 a year to be a member?
So the dues, it's four counties, and the dues have been that. And then I questioned it this year because there's not, not a lot of activity about it recently, and so they stayed this year, they stayed this year as bad, and then next year it will probably will go down. And it's basically just to cover any insurance costs that happens through.
I haven't heard, I haven't heard of really anything going on, right?
No. Well, there's stuff going on in Worth County, but the projects, projects that are happening in that county are paid for by the county, but then the dues are, I questioned the amount too, and so next year is anticipated to be reduced.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other Department Head?
Yeah, I guess maybe this is where I'll, I'll report that. I thought maybe Ryan would be in here. On Friday, I tagged along to a meeting over at the Sheriff's Department with Greg and Ryan regarding IT, where we're coming as far as services and challenges that we still have to address. Talked about government cloud. Ryan spoke of, here we go. I'll maybe let Ryan take over from here.
Sorry about that. Yeah, had a meeting with the sheriff and set some goals for the next year. I think we can agree about going forward with that. Some of those things are not facing to the employees. They come looking at the CGIS requirements, which is what is required from the state for us to be able to access their systems, which is required for dispatch to be able to do their jobs. So that's basically what I'm working on as a priority as an organization in general. The first step of that is moving to what's called the Office 365 Government Cloud. Now, obviously, that doesn't mean very much, but what that does is it moves all the email systems, Word, Excel, PowerPoint, to the government cloud, which has agreements with the state already written down to have that CGIS requirement. This was also part of the audit that ISID came in and did, as something they're suggesting. I'm hoping to get that, the quote this week from a company called Liftoff, which does these, which does these transfers between the two different clouds, and get that done as soon as possible, just to get that out of the way. Again, there won't, nobody, it's not something that the employees will see. It's purposedly just the backend of that there. After that, there's, to make sure the body cams are still supported the way that they need to be as a critical system, I will be upgrading the storage of where all those videos are, and also making sure that they're backed up. Currently, right now, they're not. So obviously, that's a major point of concern, to make sure all of those videos are able to be accessed regardless of whether the device stays up or not. So that's also a huge priority for me, is to get that done. The last thing at the sheriff's office is CGIS requirements are now requiring, I know we've talked about MFA before, this is a little different. It's MFA when you log into the computer itself, not just the email. So it'll require a phone, like when you guys log in with the first letter of your first name, I said your last name, then it's actually going to prompt you to put in a code from your phone into the computer to be able to log in.
Will that be every time you log in, or will?
It'll be able to be set the way we want to, and there's probably going, I want to be sure, to work with the vendor with this to make sure everything's going to go the correct way. So that's down the docket. That's not something I'm overly concerned with at first. It's mostly what we just talked about, that I need to make sure that those systems are stable and backed up correctly. So that's really my, my goal first, foremost. I don't, it's a CGIS requirement, I would, you know, myself, it's just kind of something I wouldn't generally do. I don't want to cause anybody any grief. It just makes it worse for me. But we do need to have that taken care of to maintain that connection to the state. So it's kind of something we need to do. Worth County is also going through the same process with Colin, their new IT person. So I'm going to work with him to see what he finds out. They're about half deployed with that, but anyway, that'll be a resource that's going through the same thing that I can work with from another county. Then, as far as in the courthouse, the first thing I want to take care of is we do have some switches that are end of life that need to be replaced out. That's going to be, that's going to be another vendor item. That's something that I'm going to look at after what we talked about a little bit earlier. I don't see that as an emergency thing. And then, of course, the phones are our highest priority as well. It may be important for us to purchase equipment as quickly as we can, especially if there's any movement on tariffs. The last time there was a tariff from these countries, it increased the cost of electronics, especially semiconductors, and all those different portions, which there was a pretty significant 10% to 15% increase on all equipment. So I want to get that purchased as soon as we can. The actual equipment may be not have the project going, but actually have the devices we need in here before anything crazy happens with the cost of server equipment and switches and the like. So those are the low hanging fruit of what I'm doing. Right now, I'm working with the treasurer's office to get them new computers. So that's what I'll be working on this week, to get them moved over among general support. So that was a lot of stuff I just threw at you, but that's kind of my goal within the next few months, is to get that all taken care of.
We said last week, in a couple weeks, we want to have phone updates.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we have quotes yet?
We have one quote from Gordon Flash. We don't have a quote from the webbing yet, but I'll have that to you guys by the next meeting. I believe we're scheduled for phones for next week.
I have a question. So where are we at on the work ticket system?
So the work ticket system that I tried to implement didn't have what we needed to be able to share the information between the departments, like I talked about, to allow the supervisors to see the tickets or the department heads to see the tickets. So I kind of needed to start from scratch. It kind of worked, but it wasn't what, it wasn't robust enough for what that we actually need. So I'm looking into a project called JIRA, which was recommended to me by ISID, to be able to provide what I talked about.
So what is your estimated goal time for completing that project?
I have a support call this week. We'll see how long that implementation is. Pretty simple, but obviously, switching between the vendors is going to need a little bit extra time for the configuration of that software.
We, we did visit someone. We were over at the sheriff's office about, you know, the, the need that if the camera doesn't work, service has to be immediate, and, and Ryan heard that message. He also has been working quite a bit with Casey and said that he would grant access so that if he's not available to help out in an emergency, that if Casey is able to help, that's some help that we would take advantage of, and we had approved that here through the board. We also just want to make sure that we, we cover ourselves as far as who's doing the what, you know, and that we're following the right protocol system.
But Casey's help has been invaluable. I've really appreciated everything he does, and then the guidance he's provided me. So I want to utilize him as much as possible when it comes to projects or just general support of the department. But it was made, I believe we had the expectations crystal clear of what's expected from me. So that was part of the meeting as well. So those expectations have been set.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
I appreciate you coming and talking to us about this, to update us, and I guess I'd like that at least once a month for you to chat with us. If there's something in regards to, we'll use that ticketing system as an example, where something just fell through and isn't going to work, just maybe a simple email to supervisors. Doesn't have to be lengthy or just like, this didn't work out the way I planned, and I'm looking at something else. That way, we kind of have an update also.
And I, I plan on coming in, I was working on something else, I was listening to when I needed to come in, but I plan on coming in every meeting, just for a quick, for the foreseeable future, just for a quick update for you guys of what I'm working on and projects that are out there. I don't think it needs to necessarily be a big speech every time, but for the foreseeable future, I'll come every week for an update, assuming I'm in the building. So that's my plan.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Very good. Yes.
Any other Department Head? County Attorney.
You already talked to him.
You already talked.
I don't want to be.
He's messing up today. I'm just like going everywhere today, guys.
All right.
Like headphones.
Our, our bridge grant application is, is progressing quite rapidly for the two bridges we have. The committee thinks that we'll get the money, so we've been kind of racing to get some of the data they need for the application. Again, I think what we'll end up doing is we'll have a fee associated with that, with the consultant. It's H R that's doing the, don't know what that is yet, until they get the information put together. But we'll also probably see, I'll probably need to get W H consent or contract for designing these bridges too, since that pushes a couple, one bridge was going to be further out in our normal plan and program, but because it now qualifies for this grant, I pushed that one ahead, and the other one was kind of in the fiscal 27 already. So we're going to probably see an accelerated design schedule for that, so we'll have to get contracts with the consultant to get those done. Don't know when we'll see those yet, but they've been kind of helping me get some of that data together for estimates and whatever else they needed. So we've been kind of, yesterday, we spent most of the day working through that, had a, had a meeting with that. So like I said, I think they're confident, the committee feels that we'll probably get the money, so that'll be a good thing. The other thing, Worth County has the option to purchase a Durapatcher from the city of Northwood, and right now, we share the Durapatcher that Worth County bought years ago, and the agreement we kind of had, it was a verbal agreement, because I get to be both county engineers. We always provided a truck, they had the equipment, and lately, that's kind of been not happening. We've got our own truck in Worth County that we pull with now, and whatever else. So what I'm thinking of doing is maybe possibly, seems like we use it quite a bit here, and then Worth County doesn't get to use it, or vice versa. So I'm thinking about purchasing the Durapatcher from Worth County for Mitchell County to have one, and then Mitchell and Worth County will probably purchase the Northwood one, so we each have our own piece of equipment, because sometimes we all want it at the same time, and it doesn't ever work out that way. So I think it's probably better if we did that. We're not talking a lot of money. I'm going to guess it's under $15,000 for that machine. So we'll work through that. I will, I've got federal aid training tomorrow, Thursday, and then I'm going Friday through Wednesday, so I won't be here for the Tuesday meeting. And then also, what I have right now is the final pay voucher for our STP project. That was the paving of Boston Avenue. Just as a reminder, that was 1.5 million in federal aid, and rest of the money comes out of our foreign market account. So the final pay voucher, the, the final costs will be, the, the total project cost was $2,49,158.95, and like I said, 1.5 of that will be the federal aid. It's 80%. We estimate it higher. So we'll get all of our federal aid, and then what actually happens is the foreign market account doesn't get hit as much, because that, the bids came in a little bit lower. So if I get approval for the final pay voucher for this project.
Is there a motion to approve the final pay voucher?
Move to approve STP dash S-CO-66, 444 dash FIB-66.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Pam. Any further discussion?
We're calling Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right.
What do we got?
We don't have. Just in time.
Has anybody mentioned anything about pipeline surveying on 350th and 40th and brush?
Oh, in.
Worth County?
In Worth County, yeah. We had, and we had somebody in Worth County call us over there, but it was, yeah. We had, and we had somebody in Worth County call us over there, but it was, yeah, it was for pipeline. But I think we don't, what we know of is we were, they were serving, they were finding section corners in the middle of our road, which isn't illegal. I mean, you know, they're one of the common section corners. I think the bigger issue was that they were worried about being on private property and that's a Worth County thing. So, but I mean, if anybody's digging up a section corner in our road for survey, that's not an illegal option for us. I mean, that's a public, public monument there to find if they're doing any other survey for property or anything else. That's a monument they'll look for because a lot of property descriptions are based on those monuments.
All right.
Yeah, we did have a, we had, uh, an inquiry about it.
We have a public hearing for fiscal year 25 budget amendment. Going to open the public hearing at nine AM. Any written or oral comments?
I have none.
And none.
I have none.
None. None.
None. All right. Close the public hearing at nine oh one. Approve appropriations, resolution 12 sixty-three dash twenty-five. You want me to read this one too? Um, resolution 12 sixty-three dash twenty-five, whereas it is desired to make appropriations for the various departments as per the budget amendment at this time. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Mitchell County, Iowa, that these changes be made in appropriations. Spentures increase 57,500 to Home Health Department. Increase 10,000 to the Medical Examiner Department. Revenues increase 279,000 to the Treasurer's Department. Increase $600 to the Recorder Department. Increase 47,500 to Home Health Department. Increase 5,000 to the Social Service Department. Approve this 11th day of February, 2025. Is there a motion to approve resolution 12 sixty-three dash twenty-five?
I made a motion.
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Tom, second. Any further discussion?
We'll call Tom.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now with the Mitchell County registry. Thank you for allowing us to come today.
Well, thank you again for allowing us to come today, um, and provide an update basically on the calendar year 24 and, uh, results of our audit for, uh, 2024 as well. So, uh, slide two, you can see our current, uh, board of trustees. Obviously we have Benny McCarthy as our chair, Steve York is our ice chair, Jean Brahm is our secretary treasurer, Ruth Porish, you know, Hernan, Cheryl Smalley, and Hopey. All right, so page, slide three. So last year in February, Mitchell County was awarded a top 100, uh, critical access hospital in the nation by Chartist. And, uh, I think this is our fourth or fifth, uh, award, so we're very excited about that. There are about 1,600 critical access hospitals in the nation, um, that would be competing for that. We were also recipients of two different performance excellence awards, one for quality and one for the patient perspective, or what our patients say about us. We were also awarded a Press Gany, which is the, the company that we use for, um, basically querying our patients, uh, as they're, on their experience. And this one was around our root insurance care. Uh, on slide four, we have, we completed a market assessment, um, in late 2023, but the results became available in, uh, early 2024. So we wanted to share with you why we did a market assessment. It had been about five years, um, maybe seven, you actually just know some thinking about that. Um, so it basically tells us, or it forecasts what's going to happen in Mitchell County or what's going to happen in our service area, where are our patients coming from? It will help us look at, uh, the physician demand. How many physicians are we going to need in our area to serve the, the people in our communities? And it will also basically tell us how we compare to other counties, which is really good information as well. And then again, demand forecasting, are we going to need more neurologists? Are we going to need more primary care? Are we going to need, you know, what, what are the needs that we're going to, uh, need to try to address? So it also gives us some opportunities around growth. Where do we have opportunity to grow as an organization? So I only included one slide of it and that's, uh, slide number five. And basically this is a competitive analysis. And, um, I'm, I'm sorry, it is very busy, uh, but the good news is, is there is a key takeaway at the bottom. And so basically the key takeaway for those of you who have a slide in front of you, it says Mitchell County dominates our outpatient market share across all service lines, uh, for the primary service area, which is what PSA stands for. I'm sorry, we have a lot of acronyms in healthcare and so if I use one, please let me know. So, um, sometimes. Uh, and there are no notable changes in the market share, uh, for the facility, uh, since 2020. A high percentage of cases for patients in Mitchell County remain in Mitchell County. So that's something that, um, we were very happy to see. Uh, obviously if you come to Mitchell County and you receive hospital care, you may be transferred, um, elsewhere for, for inpatient care because there are services that we don't offer here. We're not going to be able to do a cardiac cath or an open heart surgery, things like that. But when it comes to outpatient care, the bulk of our patients do stay here. And so, um, again, we were compared with this study, uh, against surrounding counties and we were certainly favorable. And so basically the key takeaway is that we took from the market assessment, it validated our work around orthopedics. We definitely saw a shift to, um, from orthopedics. Um, Dr. Retay is, obviously he's at Hand Specials, but he also does our hips and knees here. And, um, so we definitely saw a shift from other areas back to Mitchell County for those orthopedic procedures. Um, it also validates the importance of primary care and primary care access that we have here. We are, uh, very blessed, I feel very blessed every day to work with the outstanding group of professionals that I do work with. And, uh, we really pride ourselves on trying to make sure that we have access for our patients. Um, it's kind of a unwritten rule that we have, um, same or next day access for acute care appointments. So if you're really sick, we want to try to get you in. Um, and many communities across this nation don't have that access. And so we're very proud of that. And we have, um, now I'm not promising that happens every single day, but we do our very best to accomplish that. We were also ecstatic, uh, with that market assessment to see that the majority of our patients do stay here. And we were very surprised actually, um, how other counties differ. And so in that, we identified the fact that there may be opportunities. If people are leaving their own community for patient care, you know, are there opportunities for them to come to Osage? And so we have definitely seen that grow, uh, in our, um, we, we're seeing patients come here for care. And, uh, we have, we see a lot of new patients, uh, on, on a monthly basis. And so it gives us an opportunity, maybe they're coming for an echo or maybe they're coming for, um, a colonoscopy. And it gives us an opportunity to, you know, sort of make sure they have a great experience with us so we can keep them coming back here. Um, and also helped us to identify some gaps and opportunities that we may have as well. So in 2024, um, we hosted four nurse practitioners and three medical students. And, um, over the last 10 years, we recruited three primary care physicians and multiple, uh, nurse practitioners and, uh, PAs. So we did sign a new physician in 2024. His name was Dr. Jacob Stout. He's actually from the Forest City area. So he'll, he will join us in 2026. So we're excited about that. Um, I think his family was originally from the Charles City area, but, um, so we're excited to welcome them. He is currently a second year resident at Genesis, um, residency program. We also in 2024 are, were able to recruit another pharmacist, two physical therapists, two certified registered nurse anesthetists and two licensed independent social workers. So, um, we've been very fortunate to be able to recruit. Press Gany, so not only do we use Press Gany for our, um, our patient satisfaction, we use them for, actually we switched Press Gany in July for patients to Walterick. It's a new company, uh, but we're still using Press Gany for our employee engagement. And so employee engagement is always top of, um, mind for us. And we always want to make sure that the people who work for us are happy with their work environment, um, are happy with the culture. And so we do, do, we actually use two different methods to evaluate, um, both our satisfaction and our culture within the organization. And I'll talk about the second one in a minute. So on our Press Gany, we do, we've signed up to do that for five years in a row. Um, this particular in 2024, our score was a 4.37 from our employees on a five point scale. Uh, our employee participation rate was 91%. Our provider, so all of our physicians, mid-levels, PAs, um, was a 4.57 on a five point scale. And our provider engagement score was 93% and we were very happy with that as well. So the second one is kind of an interesting one, is called a Shingo assessment. And it actually started in manufacturing and, um, it's similar to, uh, like a ball bridge, um, survey. And so what we have is we have people from our community, which is great because then we don't have aqueous bias. And, um, so we have people from our community come in and there's a standard set of questions that they ask employees all around the building and they go from department to department. Um, excuse me for a moment. And, uh, so I just wanted to share what they're looking at when they go from department to department. They look for people, they look for cultural enablers. And so what that means is basically how are each, how is each individual in our organization able to adapt? Are they problem solvers? Are they critical thinkers? Do they know what to do when we get behind? Are they empowered to be able to make decisions? Um, so we look at that. We also look at continuous improvement. Are we continuously improving? Are we looking at our processes on an ongoing basis to try to make improvements, to make it easier, to work smarter? Enterprise alignment, how well are we aligned as a group? Um, and then finally we look at the results, what kind of our results are we getting? And so you can see, um, when we first started doing this in 2014, we were at a 1.7 floor. Five would be a world class. Um, and, uh, I would love to tell you that we would get there, but I, I'm not sure. There's always going to be opportunity for us to improve, uh, and we've made steady improvement. In 2023 though, we did see a significant bump up from a, I know this is very, uh, hard to read because it's white down there, uh, 3.18 to a 3.8, and then we dropped to a 3.56. So there's some things that we're working on right now. So, um, one of the things that came out is communications between departments, right? We have, I think, 280 employees. Now that includes all of our, um, PRN or as necessary or part, very part-time people, as well as our part-time and full-time people. And so, um, when you talk about communications, how do we consistently communicate with everyone? It's hard and it sounds really easy, but it's hard. And, um, so one of the things that we're doing now is called tiered huddle. So every morning we actually have a leadership huddle at eight 30. And then that leadership huddle, uh, we also have what's called an organizational huddle of Mercy One, North Iowa, and then all of the affiliates up here in North Iowa. So, um, and we started doing that during COVID. And what that's, what's been very beneficial about that is we basically tell them how many patients we have. They tell us how many patients they have. We talk about can we transfer patients, maybe who we need are higher level of, of care? And then we may, especially during COVID, accept lower, uh, or patients who didn't require as much like intensive care, things like that. So we share those types of things on a, our huddle every day. And now we're doing what's called a tiered huddle. So if there are departments that work closely together, let's just say, um, the registration desk staff and our clinic staff, they communicate all day long. So we get together, have a tiered huddle so we can problem solve issues that we may have. And so that has been one of the, one of the takeaways. Um, and that, that's been helpful. A couple of other things that we've been working on, um, around safety and emergency preparedness. Obviously that's top of mind always, right? I mean, the landscape across the nation, definitely we've seen some of those instances. And so we did what's called a fostering patient, uh, positive patient interaction training for all frontline staff last year. And, um, Molly Schultz and Josh Steinberg were our trainers for that. And it was really to help us, you know, in the moment, how do we work with patients who maybe are angry or upset? We also did an incident command table talk. We had a trainer come in and help us, uh, in April of last year, and that was really beneficial. And it helps us to identify gaps that we may have with our communications and how we, you know, if we have, you know, obviously our most likely thing hopefully is utility failures, things like that. Um, and so, you know, periodically be an opportunity to try that out. Like maybe a couple of weeks ago, we had that incident with some, um, phone failures and internet. Um, and so again, we're always trying to figure out how do we need to plan for any emergencies that may come forward? We also participated in the St. Anthony active shooter last year in June. And so again, we don't want to think about these things happening, uh, to us here in Mitchell County, but they certainly could. And, uh, we want to try to be as prepared and, uh, I hope the sheriff left. I, I'm just going to plug in for the police department here and the sheriff's department. We don't realize how fortunate we are here. I mean, we really don't. They are amazing. They have ops to our building. They know our building. They, you know, we have, um, panic buttons throughout the building. And so, uh, it goes directly to the comm center. And so they know exactly where to show up and they are, they're amazing. They are very supportive and, um, we are very blessed in this community with those two entities. So there's my plug for them. Too bad Greg wasn't here to hear it though. Um, some other building projects. So as you know, we have Riceville Clinic and a pharmacy that's going to be yielding in. Uh, the Riceville Clinic opens next Monday, keeping our fingers crossed. Uh, we are moving in newest stuff this week and, uh, we will close the clinic in Riceville on Thursday and Friday this week to move, officially move from the current building to our, uh, the new building. And it's, it's a significant upgrade. It's a significant upgrade. And so we are, uh, very excited about that. Uh, and as you know, we purchased the pharmacy in St. Hansgarre a couple of years ago and we are adding a pharmacy. Now, the bad news is that pharmacy will not be able to open at the same time as the clinic, unfortunately. We are working diligently to do that, but we do have a few hiccups. One, uh, the surveyors have to actually come onsite to view it. So we have to be open for them to survey it for that.
Board of pharmacies, yes.
Yes. So that is one of our hiccups. We also have some IT hiccups around sign-on. Um, and so we're going to come there, but the Riceville Clinic will hopefully open on Monday. So we're excited about that. And right below that is a picture or rendering of the, um, new clinic. Any questions about that at all? It's exciting.
It is.
Awesome. Um, so we also, if you haven't been down Pine Street, we've started digging. Some of the footings are in, not all of them, uh, but we are starting a Pine Street pavilion. It will open approximately March of 2026. Um, and so it started in November. And so what will be in that building is our therapy services. So, um, yes, we redid our therapy services back in 2017, uh, but we've outgrown that space because we've added, we now have three physical therapists, we have two, um, OTs and two speech. And so we're very blessed with the group of professionals that we have there. And, uh, we've definitely grown. We've grown in our pediatric population. And so this new building will have a pediatric gym in it as well as an adult gym. Uh, it will also have more private exam rooms. And that is something that because we have more people, we don't, we didn't have enough private exam rooms for all those people to, um, you know, have patients in a private area. And so, uh, we're very excited about that. The second floor is going to be, it's not a full second floor because of the gym hype, but, uh, Senior Life Solutions, which is currently in our basement right now, in the, um, lower, uh, I guess it would be north corner of the building. And so patients have to, this is for Medicare population. They have to come in the front door and then migrate all the way down, uh, to the basement to the furthest corner from the front. And so it has been a goal of ours to try to get all our patients or all of our patient services out of the basement on the main floor so they're eas- easily accessible to our patients. And so Senior Life Solutions will be on the second floor, but obviously there's an elevator. They'll be able to be dropped off at the, the door of this new building and then just go right up the elevator. So we're, um, very happy to try to enhance this service for patients and make it, uh, more easily accessible for them. So that's what's going to go in that new space. So you might be asking, well, what are you going to do with the existing therapy space? And so what we're going to do with that is our current specialty clinic. So where Dr. Retay, Dr. Diggleman, a Dr. Clock, the other visiting specialists come is our specialty clinic area. And it also is connected to our primary care physician area. And so. And so we will move our specialty clinic over to the existing therapy center. So as you walk in the front door, you'll go to the right for the specialists in the future. And then we will renovate the existing specialty clinic for more primary care providers. So we will be able to have a place for Dr. Stout. I'm not saying that's where he'll end up. We could do some shuffling a bit to make it more accessible, but we definitely need additional space. Dr. Brandstetter and Dr. Gertz will also stay in those areas as well because they are rural health clinic providers as well.
I'm going to talk a little bit here soon too, but you know, we have a very active family practice here in Osage, as well as St. Hansker and Riceville combined, you know, comparing us to the entire state of Iowa and other sites, you know, similar to us that are critical access hospitals with rural health clinics. You know, we are leading the way in like volume of visits that are flowing through our clinics, probably I would say in the top three, I'd say. So I mean, it's just, we are fortunate to have a very active family practice going on here in the, in Mitchell County, so.
I would say just as a side note, I think, and you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong on this, if you look at all of our clinic visits, I think we budgeted 48,000 clinic visits in a year, just to give you an idea of the amount of visits. And that, that includes, you know, our LISWs, our, our social workers, that would also include Dr. Gertz, Dr. Brandstetter, but 48, it's over 48,000, I think. So it's a lot.
That's amazing for a rural county.
It is, yeah.
Right, it is, yeah.
We're very blessed. Any questions for me? Gina's going to talk about the financials.
Yes, I'm, I'm going to spend a little time talking about financials. You know, ultimately, Cliffson Larson Allen, who are our financial auditors, and then also help with our Medicare cost report. You know, obviously, they come every year, compile our financials. Our financials are available for the public on the Iowa Auditor State website, so. But here, we're just going to talk a little bit about what we've got, had going on in fiscal year 2024, which ended June 30. You know, just ultimately, we had another well-performing year. I need to give credit, though, excellent medical staff between our providers and specialty providers, as well as experienced and dedicated department heads, engaged and satisfied employees, great leadership from our board, as well as our CEO Shelley Russell. And then again, our community that trusts and allows us to be their healthcare provider of choice. So, you know, we continue to be one of the higher-performing critical access hospitals in the state of Iowa, and we want to continue to do that. So the slides that I have start on page eight, slide number 15. Just going to add a few different things to what I've already got outlined there. You know, overall operating margin for fiscal year 2024 was a 10.7% operating margin, really, you know, just attributed to service growth, Medicaid program, and capturing some additional reimbursement for us, as well as our Medicare cost reports. We had a bunch of reports that were actually still open due to a need to audit our, our large, like two-story addition by Medicare. So there was kind of a backlog. And so we released some open cost reports and the funds that we had allocated to those. So, you know, we just really have just a good, good operation, though, still flowing through fiscal year 2024. Our strategy continues to be driving those family practice visits. You know, the family practice is going to generate ancillary revenues for you. You're going to have your imaging, you're going to have your therapy, you're going to have your lab, potentially you're going to have surgery. You know, those are huge drivers for our organization. So we're constantly going to be focusing on those family practice visits. You know, we also have the podiatry, we also have optometry. But again, like those visits don't create the same ancillary ratio of, of, you know, referrals for the additional testing like the family practice does. So again, our, our focus still is also on surgery too. Surgery has a great return on investment. It was one of the reasons why we did the project for our surgery department where we expanded it. We totally redid the HVAC to make sure that we could provide a, a infection-free type of airflow. So nonetheless, I mean, we've really been fortunate in the growth that we've seen in those areas. So just kind of talking a little bit about our outpatient services from fiscal 2024, you know, we were up 105 visits in the ER. We're pulling individuals from surrounding counties, including Saragordo, to come to our ER. You know, we haven't plateaued yet. We're still actually growing. This current fiscal year, we're seeing a boom in, in volumes as well.
Keep exceeding the records.
So we are a record, a new daily record, a new monthly record.
I saw back in maybe 2014, we were running around a little over 200 visits per month. And I think in January, we had 372 ER visits. And so it's definitely, we've seen growth. I mean, even, even when we, they expanded Medicaid in the state in 2015, we saw a small bump up at that point, and it's continued to grow from that point forward.
So in addition to growth, and too, from a surgery standpoint, we increased 136 procedures from last year or the, or from the prior year. So that was about a 10% increase. And then other outpatient visits, you know, so coming in for some infusion or therapy from speech, occupational or physical therapy or imaging as well, that was actually up 4% over the prior year. So again, those are the drivers that we need in order to, you know, continue to grow in our organization.
Can I just mention something too? So if you actually just looked at our total revenue, and obviously, we're a critical access hospital, we have three clinics, but the inpatient hospital is only the seven to eight percent of our total revenue. The rest is on the outpatient side. So when you see we have maybe five or six inpatients, you think, wow, why are all those cars that parking, it's because we have a lot, the bulk of our business is outpatient. Yes. Thank you, Shelley.
And then lastly, the clinic family practice, so just looking fully at them, had just a little over 2% growth over the prior year. We had a little gap in coverage. One of the providers was off on a leave of absence to help baby, you know, during fiscal year 24. So that kind of tends to happen, but otherwise, I mean, you know, our providers do a great job of getting patients seen. Again, Shelley mentioned either same-day, next-day appointments. We're doing what we can to, you know, make sure that we're able to take care of our patients. So the new line of service, and Shelley already did mention it, was the Brower Pharmacy. So actually, we were approached by the entrepreneur that had the Brower Pharmacy, and he had actually gone through and was working with his, I think it was Thrifty White is who he worked with, you know, had a first right of refusal to buy it, they weren't really interested. You know, we knew that we wanted to be able to continue to maintain pharmacy services in the community. You know, the pharmacy rented space from us out of the St. Anthony Clinic, so, you know, it just kind of made sense. You know, we're not in the pharmacy business though, so I mean, we're in the hospital business, and specifically critical access. So, you know, we had engaged some professionals to help us with the whole onboarding process. The exiting entrepreneur, you know, was very supportive throughout the entire process and really just need to give him a lot of credit for, you know, working with us, helping us work through, you know, some of the challenges along the way. You know, he's still working for us in a PRN basis to provide backfill coverage as needed. Tracy Hart, and you may not be familiar with Tracy, she actually is out of the Howard County area, closer to Prescott, but she was actually essential in helping get that retail pharmacy operations up and running. She kind of wears several hats. She's also our medical director, medical records director, as well as, I think she helped oversee the optometry department too, so. So we do have the plans with the Riceville Clinic, but you know, similar to what Ryan was talking about earlier, he was talking about your multi-factor authentication, really from a security standpoint or healthcare, that's even transitioning further to our woes right now, our single sign-on, which you have one sign-on to your computer, which then accesses all of the clouds that you need to be able to access. So when you have a terminated employee, boom, it cancels all of those accesses at one time. It's been interesting. So we actually, all of our IT is, is, well, controlled as well as secured by Trinity Health Systems, who owns Mercy One North Iowa. And so we're just, we're very fortunate, obviously, to have that kind of level of security, but it really sometimes makes it difficult to try to do things that, with vendors that they've never worked with before. And then also, you know, we're kind of just this small little group here in, in North Iowa, you know, they're, they're throughout the US, so.
And yeah, I would just say 95% of the hacks that have happened in healthcare are through vendors. So as an example, a vendor would be someone who, like if we have a blood pressure machine that feeds right into our, our electronic health record, that's a vendor. And so, and so think about all the, like our radiology machine, all the machinery that we have is connected, well, maybe not all of it, but most of it is connected. And so it can, they can get in that way. And so there's a security risk assessment that has to happen with every single piece of equipment, and it has to be vetted. And if the specifications, when they vet, when Trinity vets it, aren't up to the standards that Trinity has, then we may have to choose a different vendor. And so it, it can be very, we love it and we hate it all at the same time, because we know it's keeping everything secure, but sometimes it is an onerous process.
All right, probably you need to keep moving here too. So just a real quick on the expenses side of things, you know, we did see some pretty good growth in our expenses. You've got a large chunk of that is part of picking up the pharmacy, as well as then, you know, kind of your standard, standard wage increases. Labor's primarily, you know, obviously, one of our largest bad and benefits expenses, you know, continuing to monitor that, as well as, you know, we have some drug costs have just increased exponentially. It was about 20% increase on drug costs just for the hospital and the clinics over the prior year. So it's always a challenge, you know, we have to continue to try to be as lean as we can be. Heading to the next slide, we saw just some graphs then that my auditors, Cliffson Larson Allen, put together for our board. We covered these at our board meeting. Ultimately, it's just some good benchmarking to see where do we fall in comparison to other sites that are similar in size to us. As you look at this, you're going to see like the different lines represent different types of analysis. So Cliffson Larson Allen clients are the light blue that you're going to see on all the graphs. Mitchell County Health Center is kind of the dark navy blue, almost a black in there. The gold standard is kind of that golden line. It's like 35 facilities throughout the US, so it's not just like Iowa, Minnesota, but again, throughout the US. You know, and you're going to find where a lot of our operation is actually running at that kind of gold standard, but I did ask them if we were included in the gold standard, and they did, they said we were not. But we feel like we should be. And then ultimately, the last standard, the Iowa Critical Access Hospitals, that's 73 sites, similar to how we're structured here at Mitchell County Health Center in the state of Iowa. So you can see from an operating margin standpoint, again, there's where we ran in the, in the benchmarking, because they didn't have 2024 done for all these other clients, so that's why we're sitting out there all by ourselves. But you've got that historical there that runs from 2021 through 2024. And you just see, you know, we are on a good path, we continue to remain on a good path. 10.7% was that operating margin, something that you're going to see off to the side. I actually wrote a 9.6, but that's adjusted for IFRS. We have a, have had over the last probably three years now, a very positive GASV 68 IFRS adjustment that just occurs with the audit in that we're recording either shortfall or the excess of IFRS being fully funded. And because IFRS became fully funded, was it 2021? We've seen some positive adjustments or reduction to our IFRS liability, and, and so a credit has flowed through on that benefit line. This year's credit was like 502,000, last year was just over a million, so just kind of keep that in mind. Eventually, that is going to flip, and we're going to probably have an IFRS adjustment or a recording extra expense, but. Total margin, similar situation there. You know, we have a great operations as well here, you know, between the county tax support that we get, as well as investment income. We've been doing well with cash, you're going to see that on the next slide, on page 10, you have slide number 19. Our days cash on hand is running at 388 days. There's a little definition there, you can take a look at what that means, but that has actually allowed us to, you know, really get some great returns these past couple of years on interest rates. We are actually over $600,000 in interest income over the prior year. It's been incredible, and it's probably obviously going to be ending here soon. AR days is a, a measure that we use and ultimately as a revenue cycle excellence. So pretty much from the day that the appointment takes place, so registration, the nursing staff getting charges through, the provider doing dictation, and flowing up to coding onto the bill going out the door, and then the bill getting paid. Our average days that takes is about 36. We are the gold standard, we have been the gold standard for several years. You know, really, the only things that kind of, well, and I've got great tenure there. I've got my Director of Patient Accounting has got 45 years of service with us, she's going to be retiring here soon. The Director of HIM, again, very seasoned as well with probably over 20 years of service overall, but with us probably close to five. But again, I just really have to give a great shout out to those teams, as well as, you know, the primary impact would be a software migration, and we are looking at some software migrations here in the next 12 months. So unfortunately, I'm probably going to see those days rise, but then we'll just have the goal to return to the same levels what we previously were performing at. Last slide then, is average age of plant. Ultimately, you know, are we reinvesting back into our organization, whether it be for building, equipment, or even technology as well? So the, the electronic medical record will flow through there. We are looking at going a full comprehensive medical record. Plan would be is about September of 2026 at the latest. And that's going to be both in the clinic and in the hospital. So previously, we've only been on the hospital side, but we continue to use paper charts to help our providers be as efficient as they can be. But I think all the bugs have been worked out, and I think we're going to be able to make that transition pretty, pretty smoothly next year. So that's what's on our landscape for us at this point. And then just lastly, I did want to give you through November of 2024, this is just a slide that shows a benchmarking of where we're at in operating margin against the Mercy One Critical Access Hospital sites. I think there's 20, I think, there's 30. Is there 30 of us? And that's Mercy-owned or Mercy-affiliated. And again, we're Mercy-affiliated. We have the management agreement that Shelley will talk about here shortly, but, you know, we're continuing to do well and performing well this current year with, being right on track with budget and, as well as the prior year. So moving on to the tax levy, just a couple of reporting factors here. You know, we have no intention of increasing that rate, Betty will tell me maybe that we haven't, she's going to talk about that. All right. It's at least been 15 years, I think, since it's been increased. But ultimately, the reporting that I've given you here on slide 24, it's public reporting. You can get it out on the Iowa Department of Management. But there's two different types of hospitals that levy, one being a public hospital, the other one being a revenue hospital. There's four revenue hospitals in the state of Iowa, and then the rest are, are, yes, thank you, are 347 public hospitals, so. And that's going to be 40 of us. When you look at the dollars levy, you know, Mitchell County Health, Mitchell County Health Center, our hospital is fifth lowest in those public hospitals, or sixth overall. Just an added point, I did find where one new, Alamo Key County is new to levying taxes and showed up on this report. And then lastly, hospital levy rates, our rate being that 1.2816, is the 12th lowest levy rate for those public hospitals. Again, the revenue hospitals actually have a different structure, they've just got a max of the 1.08. You can see them on rows 31 through 34, but they're always just going to be a flat rate, whereas pretty much the other hospitals, it could potentially fluctuate, but again, we're locked in right now still at that 1.12816. So we're always thankful for the levy support we receive. It's those kind of dollars that help us provide the opportunity to continue to reinvest in our organization, again, update that equipment and the technology. At this point, any questions for me?
That's great. You have to stay very thorough. All right, Shelley? All right. So the last slide here, and then anybody's going to talk about this too, is so I always want to try to make sure that people understand how Mitchell County works. So we have what's called a management services agreement by which I'm employed by Mercy of North Iowa, actually, I'm employed by Mercy Des Moines as of January. But the rest of the employees, well, that's not true, the physicians are also employed by Mercy, so we have a professional services agreement as well. But Mitchell County is a freestanding public entity, so we do not get money from Mercy. So sometimes we'll have people in the community say, what's Mercy doing with this? Or why is Mercy putting up? Mercy doesn't give us money for any of those things. We actually pay Mercy for services. And so some of the services that we do get for Mercy One would be things like the network connectivity, or so the IT systems, the professional services agreement by which all the physicians except for Dr. Brandstetter work under, legal support, regulatory compliance, managed care contracting, and so group purchasing. So as you can imagine, if we want to buy So as you can imagine, if we want to buy a new piece of equipment that's, you know, $3 million, a Trinity contract has, they probably have a better group purchasing. And so we're able to access those group purchasing discounts. And so that's what we actually get from Mercy One, but we do pay them for all those services that they do provide to us. But I do think that that's confusing because you see their name on the side of our building, but we are freestanding. We do not get money. We pay them money for the services that they render.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry. Well, just quickly, just to, on Gina's message here, we could actually levy a lot more than 1.12816, but we've been doing, doing that since the 2009, 2010 year. And that only takes care of, we are allowed 27 cents per thousand for the general basic, 27 cents per thousand for ambulance service. And we're both, we're at the maximum of both of those. We give, I think it's 18.9% of our ambulance levy goes to Riceville because they service that, that geographic portion of the county, 18.9%. Somebody asked why, the first responders, why we didn't give to St. Ansgar. They are not an ambulance service, they're first responders, so we're not allowed to give to St. Ansgar out of that fund. But I do want to tell you that out of the amount that we levy, the 1.12816, the FICA and IFRS, that rate, we could exceed that. We could collect everything we need for that right, that rate under the Department of Management. We also could, we could levy everything we need under debt services and under tort liability. We don't do that. So what we honestly levy for, and we, we're levying, we can levy, but we're not a levying board. We're a certifying board. So this came up, I know, different times, way back when Stan was here, he thought that the Board of Supervisors had to oversee that we gave our budget to you, we, that, you know, you had to certify that levy. Well, anyway, we don't. We certify our budget to the, our levy to the auditor and the auditor in turn certifies it to the Department of Management. So if indeed we would go ahead and do everything we could do, it would be several millions of dollars. And I've asked Gina to really someday just look at that because I looked at 2023 and actually at that point, the IFRS was over $1 million. We don't levy that. So I mean, just think of that. We levy simply for the 27 cents, the 27 cents and a portion of FICA. But I'm sure that we, if we levied for everything that they would allow us to, and we could only do that if we're at, if we're at the 27 cents per general, which we are, it would be several million dollars of county taxes in addition to what we're getting. So I think we've been very, very prouled and I think we've been good managers. And I did want to mention that the affiliation agreement took part in 1994. And at that time, the only reason that they were looking at that, the Board of Trustees, the person that was in charge, the CEO was, had ill health and their finances were in bad shape. And the Board of Trustees and the doctors, a lot of them were ready to retire or getting close to retirement. So they really needed doctors. They needed management. They looked at Mayo and Mayo said, yes, go furnish management services, but no physician services. That's why they went to Mercy and Mercy would do both. So we therefore had an affiliation agreement, which gave us the core services that Shelley is talking about. And then we have a management services agreement that at that time spelled out the CEO, the CFO and the C E O. But in the meantime, the only person that has to stay under that is the CEO, I meant Shelley. So anyway, that has been, we, we have set professional services agreement with them to provide the, the physicians. And at that time, when we first went into the agreement with them, they, they agreed to furnish four family practitioners. Now, you know, they also agreed, one of the core services they agreed to, I mean, they talked to us about recruitment and, you know, they need to recruit their own and a lot of that wasn't happening. And so I don't know how many years ago it was, but we sent out, and it was after Shelley came on board. And Shelley thought it would be a good idea. We talked it over and we sent medical professionals out and clinical, a medical and clinical professional out to all the residency programs to tell them what we were all about. That's how we recruited three physicians. Actually, Megan probably would have come back anyway because she was a local Megan Peterson. But that's how we got Dr. Hardens and that's how we got Dr. Stell. That's why we're getting all the rotation of physicians and nurse practitioners. So anyway, and then I wanted to talk to you about, just briefly about the trustees. We are in charge of the hospital. Mercy is not in charge of the hospital. We, under 347, we are still in charge. So we have a very good Board of Trustees. We have two bankers. We have some people who are in business. We have a health nurse on the board and I'm the governmental person. So we have good representation. We have people from three, from Osage, we have from St. Ansgar, Stacyville and Riceville. So we're well represented throughout the county. I wanted to mention in conjunction with the Riceville Clinic, we were very fortunate. Dean and Sandy Brundy donated the land and they also tore down the house and got it all ready for us. So their contribution was a big contribution to that.
And they provided a booklet yesterday for the new equipment they came in.
Well, good. Oh, they've been wonderful partners, I'm telling you. So that was a great thing. But, you know, and the specialty clinics, I mean, people can almost attain any kind of health care and then move on to wherever they have to go to get it, but through the specialty clinics that we have. And Dr. Brandstetter is our general surgeon and he's the only one that isn't the surgeon from Mercy or somewhere, somewhere else. And she spoke about the availability of appointments and the top, how we've been the top access hospital about four times. And Shelley would never mention this, but at one point I remember seeing that she was one of the CEOs that was mentioned in the top 20, I believe. And so, and another thing she wouldn't mention is that she's both been on the IHA and the AHA, and that's the Iowa Health and the American Health Association, which has been a real, real help to us. So, you know, it's amazing when you have somebody, we have amazing senior leadership team, you know, and people, people, I've been to Mercy Hospital for surgeries that at the time they couldn't do here. And there were nurses that said to me, I've heard so much about Osage, I wish I could work there. And I said, well, you could apply. And they said, well, my husband works at another place and he insists we got to live in Mason City. And so she's, you know, but we really, I mean, the culture there has been fantastic. We have seven nurse practitioners and two VAs. And so anyway, I'm just really proud and happy to be part of this great organization. I look at all the buildings that we've done, because I remember back when we had, everything was on the first floor and we had a couple of wings and, you know, 1952. And then, you know, after we took, after we affiliated, we've just had one building project after another. So I think we're very fortunate in this community and, you know, we have people, as she said, we have people that are coming from other counties because, well, our county doesn't have a hospital, our city doesn't have a hospital, they closed their hospital years ago. So anyway, all in all, I mean, it's been a great, a great ride here and I continue to be very supportive of our medical system. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for what you do. So thanks for letting us come today.
Yeah. All right. So I don't mess up again. We'll go on to discussion with Prairie Ridge on opioid treatment program. Looks like, do you want to do?
I don't know what the timeframe is. I've got a PowerPoint where I can just run through things. Are you running behind or?
We have a session meeting at 10, but I don't think we have to start that.
Well, how about if I just, if you don't mind, I'll just run through things unless you prefer. So I'm dip girl, I'm a nurse practitioner at Prairie Ridge. And the purpose of us coming here, Dr. Jorgensen usually does these things, and I know she's been in communication with some of you, and she's got a full clinic today, but the purpose for us coming here is obviously like many to request dollars to help us support an opioid treatment program that we're starting up hopefully June 1st. And to give you just a little bit of background on it, the, the opioid overdose death rates continue to rise, you know, nationwide and in Iowa. And so as, as part of that, the state of Iowa is, has restructured the mental health and behavioral health systems with substance use as well. And in doing so, they've created, they got a grant, a federal grant that helped to plan for CCBHCs. They, they set things out like CCBHCs and, and that is Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinics. So that's something that they've been doing nationwide to see how they work and to provide a more comprehensive approach to care for behavioral health and substance use. So as part of that, we applied for and received to be one of the CCBHCs in Iowa, and there's approximately nine of them, I believe. And so we serve about 13 counties in doing so and we're just getting going with that. But as part of that, Iowa, Iowa, every state had an opportunity to put their own requests in place. So as part of this whole thing, because the overdose death rates, Iowa has asked that we have, it's called an opioid treatment program, also called a methadone clinic, within 60 miles of every core CCBHC, which would be Mason City for us. So our closest, our closest methadone clinic is in Waterloo, which is eighty some miles away. So that's why we then have to move ahead and, and create one. We tried to contract with, it's a for-profit, large organization over the nation that's in, in Des Moines. And they had agreed to kind of support the behavior, or the opioid treatment program for us and run it and they would, we would just provide them space. But then after about a year of going back and forth, they backed out on that because we couldn't guarantee that we'd have the correct number. They, they wanted like at least 100 patients guaranteed and we could not guarantee that. So we went down the path of doing our own. So, which really has ended up to be a good thing. And so basically, methadone clinics are, they're, they're highly federally regulated. And part of that is because they've been around since some late 60s, early 70s and they started out in the prison system. So that's part of the reason for the high regulation of them and just for safety purposes as well. So there's a lot of security involved in these clinics. We have to get approval by the Drug Enforcement Agency as well as we have to have it accredited and such. So there's a lot of hoops to run through. So we're currently in the process of creating all the processes, procedures and regulations and building the clinic. And as part of that, our startup costs are about 155,000, you know, we've so far estimated. And so with the overdose death rates, unfortunately, Cerrodo County is one of the top 10, which is not where you want to be, obviously in the state of Iowa for overdose deaths. And that was really quite surprising to us, but with fentanyl coming into the system, that's what's really raised everything and that's what's caused more overdose deaths and, which is why we're also needing to look at, at methadone. So methadone was initially created for heroin use and, which is why it was in the prison system, et cetera. And, and it blocks 100% of the opioid receptors, whereas I, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Suboxone, but Suboxone is something we've been using for quite a while. That blocks 50% of the receptors. So Suboxone works really well for people who are maybe on pain pills, you know, a little bit of heroin here and there and things like that. But for people who are using heroin and fentanyl, and fentanyl is really being put in everything right now, unfortunately. So for people who are using both of those, then the, the Suboxone you max out at 24 milligrams. It's not enough to curb the cravings, to, you know, relieve, relieve the withdrawal, et cetera, whereas methadone is. So that's why methadone really is kind of the medication of choice right now. So we don't know again, how many individuals we're going to have. Some people think we'll be pulling a lot in who are currently on Suboxone, it's just not working for them. So that's kind of a, that's going to be trial and error. But methadone and Suboxone decrease opioid death rates by 50%. And where I just kind of talked about, if you had like a heart medication that would decrease heart attacks by 50%, it'd be malpractice not to use it, you know? So which is why it's obviously a good thing to use. The, the, in a methadone clinic is, is like a comprehensive treatment program. So they don't just come in and get the medication. They have to be involved in counseling services and other treatment programs. The, and the big push is just to, to take care of the health overall. So we have to have psychiatry involved and primary health involved. And you do testing for HIV, hepatitis C, TB, you know, all the things that unfortunately go along with substance use disorder. So what we did is we, we looked at counties within 60 miles for a radius and then we did a population based request for dollars and we, we took the 155,000. I mean, realistically, we're going to have to figure out how to work this clinic into our overall operating cost, you know, on an ongoing basis. And, and we should be able to do that without a problem. So for Mitchell County, based on the population, the request is for $10,518. And that's.
That's the population.
That's the population?
Yeah, Betty's on our board. I'm sorry. I gotta look now.
It's like 13, 13?
Okay. Because in comparison, Cerrodo County is like $56,000 that we're requesting.
And I apologize, you couldn't show your PowerPoint. If you would like to email it to all of us.
Oh, I'd be happy to. Thank you. Dr. Jorgensen, I'm tired on us, so she'd appreciate that. And the, the, the request is coming from an opioid dollar standpoint, because I think each county gets, I don't know how much, but they get opioid settlement funds. And, and, and so I think they're pretty regulated with how you use them. So that's, that's basically what we're requesting. So Mitchell County is $13,473 and Cerrodo County was $54,000. So I think that's it, unless you have any questions.
So your request, your request is $13,473 and 3 cents.
Yes.
For your request.
Yes.
All right.
Shelley sent them all that?
Yeah, we got all that.
Yeah, you got that. Okay.
They have everything.
All right.
Just send the PowerPoint?
Yeah, that'd be great. I'm really sorry. No, 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 please don't. I understand how things go, believe me.
We received that information, but your, your information was very good. We didn't receive everything that you talked about.
Okay.
That was excellent.
That was wonderful. We appreciate you coming today.
All right.
Thanks.
Any questions or?
I don't think so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 11, discussion and possible action on too good for drugs contribution.
This is Emily. I'm online.
Hi.
I wasn't able to be there today, so I apologize. But I am just hoping to take action on what we talked about last week with the too good for drugs. for Drugs program training. I gave a breakdown last week that kind of talked about how we're collaborating with two other counties, and then the cost that Mitchell would be providing. So that was $750, and it would cover the training mileage for the staff, and then the venue for the training, and then it's an all-day training, so the lunch as well. I did send that Exhibit 1, that has everything that can be covered by the opioid settlement, to Sydney and Pam this morning, so hopefully that can get sent out to everyone too, so they have that.
Did I forward it to everyone?
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so we have Resolution 1264-25.
I like the motion.
Mark me in motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Pam, second. Any further discussion?
I'll call Sydney.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Pam.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Number 12, discussion and possible action on maintenance attending links training. As I believe that Dave would like to participate in a webinar to learn more about the link system. Didn't know if we needed action on it, or?
I guess we got an email on that. I, I have no reason to say if you want to advance yourself, I definitely would think you should be able to.
I approved it through the email, I replied to the email, so I'm good with it.
Do I make it official, or just? You all okay with it?
I would think it would be part of his regular duties. I wouldn't think you would need to document that from that level. I think that's a great idea.
All right. Consensus. I have some notes.
Um, I had meetings attended. I had none.
You had meetings attended. I had none.
The only meeting I had, we visited when I had with the IT and Sheriff's Department there. I also met with Betty on Friday morning for a short while at time.
I had a safety meeting last week after the meeting, and we talked about K-Pots, and they came from Heartland Insurance and talked about, we're not going to get our deduction from our workman's comp claim because we're way over, so let's out on that money. And then I had a work force, we voted on all the positions, officers, and they're doing an audit, apparently authors around the state are behind, so be aware on that. No results on that.
I had none.
Public comments, and we have a meeting at 10:00. Yes, I know.
As far as extending your moratorium.
Yes.
We're listing something that may or may not be a real thing. I don't know if there's going to be interference for communications. We have other wind farms in the county, and they interfere with communication.
Yes.
How bad?
I, as far as how bad or measuring it, you know, I think that if you visit with several of the farmers in the area, you know, you can definitely hear some, some issues with
Well, you got some farmers in there. The other thing is, they announced your use as NIACOG is about the people that you're using now, and they serve other communities and other counties and stuff. And if they're stalling operations here, that where we have to extend through September in order to know whether we're doing something or not, you know? We're waiting on things to happen through NIACOG for our businesses too. Maybe NIACOG has not put even staff in place to take care of everybody that they want to handle. I for one will talk to them about that, because we can't just wait because you got too many people to sit. That's my, my statement for the day.
Thank you.
I just wanted to kind of jump a little bit on what you guys talked about, the moratorium. And the county attorney was right, in Worth County, that was a mess because they had stuff started, like, appreciate you guys working with the different entities to make it happen. I was just on a trip with some guys, any wind farm projects that were planted are trying to get pushed through because of the concern of that, so I hope, I know you guys had some different things with personnel being gone and stuff, but I just encourage you to try and get the worst done as, as fast as possible, do as good as you can for, for the landowners that maybe are concerned about it. We just started a school board meeting last night in Ansgar, and the top three taxpayers in our district are all wind farms, and they make about 24% of the tax. We're just going for a bond, we got an A-plus rating partly because of that, you all mentioned in Ansgar, when they came and talked about us, the financial guys, when you can get a possibility about wind towers, they are important, there's a lot of ifs, buts, and maybes, but the facts are, they bring a lot of, of tax money to the community. So I encourage you to try, do the right thing, appreciate that you guys do for that, so.
Thank you.
I just had a comment about the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors intervening with the Iowa Utility Commission. Filing an intervention is similar to filing an objection, which you've done already about the eminent domain, except an intervention is directly related to the upcoming hearings for the Phase 2 routes. Without an intervention, you give up your right to address the ICU with any concerns about the Summit Pipeline. And it's important because that gives you, the county, an opportunity to say and allows you to present concerns to the Iowa Utility Commission when they're making decisions about the Phase 2 part of it. Otherwise, they basically don't have to really do anything unless you intervene, which is kind of a rule change from the last hearing they had of Things One. So meaning the IUC is allowed to ignore any concerns you have unless you submit an intervention. Conservation areas and the Cedar River waterway are special threats in Mitchell County. Some landowners are also submitting interventions. There is a 20-day time limit once they announce the hearing schedule for interventions to be submitted, so it's something to think about ahead of time. And I can send an email with some examples of other counties, what they used to meant for interventions. Harden County, Floyd County, Wright County, and Woodbury County are examples I have, just send that as an email. And the other thing was about the surveys that we talked about before on the holidays. And when I called the survey companies, they said they generally carry a general liability insurance, but those are just the ones I've talked to only do boundary surveys, and so they just have it under a general liability of like $300,000, $600,000 liability to the public. And so nobody knew what, more, which is just called a walk-on survey as opposed to an invasive survey.
Thank you. There's no more public comments, we'll adjourn the meeting at 10:08.